Meeting to order. It's the meeting of October 20th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
President Johnson, I would like to request one change to the order of business. I'd like to have the commission consider a new 7B. That item would be a consideration to approve reuse pump station bid and thereby making the current 7B, 7C.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Harry Nun, then, would there be a motion to approve the order of business as amended?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Harry Nun, all in favor, then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item, then, is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
I have a second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Harry Nun will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. Item A is to hear the human resource monthly hiring report. And, Mr. Kessel, I assume you're doing that?
I would assume it as well. Thank you for recognizing this item. This is a recurring item on your agenda. That report has been enclosed and made part of the agenda itself. We have several openings, again, this month. The police are in the process of hiring. They also have had several other issues.
You're about to be rescued. Here's Mrs. Nomenek. We're just in the HR report if...
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Please take over.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Police officer position, right now, we have actually three openings. We'll be doing interviews this week. Animal control officer, we just hired that position, so that's been filled. Sanitation laborer, we've got three open positions right now. And sanitation operator position, I don't have listed on here, but we do have an operator position open. Sanitation supervisor, we've kind of struggled with filling that one for some time. We had filled it for a while, and then we lost that person. And we kind of waited a while and trying to decide we want to restructure or what we're going to do. But they really have a need to have that position filled. So that closes this week. Hopefully, we'll get some good applicants for that. Street operator is filled. We hired three people, so that department is full right now for operators. We did fill our chief wastewater plant operator position, and we're real excited about that. Gentleman from Bismarck is going to be moving here for that. Communication specialist, we did some interviews last week. We've got two positions right now open for communication specialist. Water utility operator, that's been a tough one, too. We have one position. Seems like we just can't seem to get that filled. So we are going to reopen that position again. We had just one person apply. So we're going to try some different advertising and see if we can't get that one filled. We had an administrative assistant position for engineering just opened, and that one has been filled. Deputy city administrator for finance and administrative services. We are going to be doing second interviews for that tomorrow.
Next week.
Next week?
Next week.
Next week, sorry. Next week. So hopefully, we'll have some good luck there. Museum assistant, we did fill that. We've got a full-time position in that role. Mechanic has been kind of difficult. We've had that open twice and have not been able to fill it. We are working on a new job description right now for that and taking it down a level and making it a lube tech. So we'll be having a civil service meeting this week to get approval for that, and then we'll be bringing it forward to you later. See if we can open it at a lower position. Senior property appraiser, we had an internal opening for that, and that was filled internally. Communication specialist, too. That was a new position that we created as a supervisory position for the dispatchers, and that was opened and filled internally as well. Custodian position, we had just one open, and we just did interviews last week for that position. That's for the library-museum position. So hopefully, we'll get that one filled. And then, library assistants, I believe we've got that one completely filled as well, too. And then, we're just going to start working on all of our new positions for 2015 and doing advertising for all of those. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? In a related matter, I don't know if I overstep my authority or not, but I made a contact today with an outside auditing firm, CPA firm, and requested that they submit a proposal to us to provide chief financial slash chief accounting services to us on an interim basis. I'm concerned with the year-end coming up, the workload that our two people in that department have been carrying, that we need to get some help in here fairly quick. And I know we're hopefully close to a deputy city administrator, and one of the new positions you referred to is a chief account or an accounting officer or accounting manager. But kind of with the year-end things coming, I just felt we better move on this. So I did make a call today. Ida Bailey is our auditor, so they can't provide those services. So I made a call to another firm. Had a couple of conversations today, and I do think they'll make us a proposal. So I hope that meets with your approval, and I hope we can do this on a negotiated basis, Mr. Coling, so we can get this to work. I told them it could be anywhere from a couple of months to several months. Mr. Kessel?
I just wanted to expound on that a little bit. It would be very similar to our current arrangement with KLJ to provide city engineering services. These folks, at least initially, would be embedded, or our thought processes, if they could do that, is be embedded within city staff, so that they'd be onsite, report to work every day here as opposed to their firm. So I certainly support and commend President Johnson, because I do think that is a much-needed service. The staff that is working in that area has been putting in a great deal of overtime, and it's much-needed. So I certainly would confirm and recommend the pursuit of a contract.
Anything else on that?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to item B, and this is a resolution regarding surplus equipment. Mr. Kessel will introduce us further.
Thank you, President Johnson. Every so often, generally annually, we ask the city commission to surplus equipment that we can then divest ourselves of, usually at a sale at the end of the year or possibly in the spring. In order to be surplus, it has to have a value of less than $2,500 or at least an estimated value. You'll notice contained within the resolution, there are six different pieces of equipment that we'd like to have declared surplus and then sell. The solid waste has one vehicle, the police department has four, and the fire department has one as well. So unless there's any questions, it's fairly straightforward. We'd just like you to approve the resolution, thereby declaring these items surplus and then sell them at public auction or otherwise divest them.
Okay. I assume this is Resolution 61.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Are there any comments or questions regarding Resolution 61?
President, I should note that not all of the equipment on here may have a value of less than $2,500 pursuant to our ordinance, as though you can declare that equipment as surplus. And if the estimated value is more than $2,500, then it's required to be sold at a public auction. If it's less than $2,500, then the city may dispose of it in whatever means it can.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments, questions? We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any additional discussion? Harry Nun will go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Item C is the swearing-in of an alternate judge. Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, he is not present in the commission chamber, so I would like the commission to skip this item for now. He may be here at a later time.
Okay. Well, if he shows up, just remind me. We'll go to item D, then, and that's to hear reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and commission. The first item that I have is the risk management report. This report is prepared by Fire Chief Seavock, and it is contained within your agenda packet. As you can see, the trend for injuries related to staff incidences has been declining since the beginning of the year, which is a welcomed trend. So each quarter, they have decreased. You'll also notice that the police department still has the most reported injuries, followed by the solid waste department and then buildings and sites. Sprains and strains continue to be the most reported incident, and we are very pleased that the city commission has approved a safety and training officer for 2015. I think Fire Chief Seavock is probably the happiest person to have that position approved by the city commission. And so we'll have somebody dedicated to not only compiling the reports, accumulating the incidences, doing the paperwork, but also try to be on the proactive side. And certainly, you know, Chief Seavock has done that as well, but to be on the proactive side in terms of training and developing a program to lessen future injuries. So unless there's any questions, that would conclude my report with regard to the safety report.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions regarding the safety report? All right, you may continue.
Thank you. Also contained within your document are several reports that I just want to spend a little bit of time on. The first is a comparison of statistical information. This report was put together, actually, by the firm of AE2S, and it compares the majority, the top 10 most populous cities in regards to utility accounts, employees, lane miles, and debt. As you walk your way through that report, I just wanted the city commission to notice that the lane miles that are reported in the city of Dickinson is 350, and that number was provided by our street coordinator, Brent Culture. And that would be the, we would be the second highest city in terms of lane miles in a community. Fargo would exceed ours by, they have 479, Dickinson 350, Bismarck 344, Grand Forks 340, and so on down the line. That's important information for us to have. Part of that is due to the bypasses. That has added quite a few lane miles to the city of Dickinson that we are maintaining. That was for a portion, that's a five mile, or five lane wide stretch, and then after it becomes slightly smaller than that. But when we are, we'll soon be approaching the winter season, and that means that snow removal will become prominent in a lot of people's minds. And just wanted to point out that the lane miles that we have in Dickinson seems to exceed a community of our size that is typically there. Then I wanted to move on to some comparison of mill values, and I also want to give credit to Jeff Fuchs. He's the city administrator in Jamestown. He compiles this information each and every year and then provides it to city administrators across the state. And there's just a few things that I want to point out. The first one is a mill value comparison. So based on 2014 property taxes, the city of Dickinson right now has the second lowest mill value total in the state. And when I say the city of Dickinson, I mean the accumulation of all the taxing entities, so school, cities, park districts, and other. And when you look at it individually, our school district actually has the lowest amount of mills levied in the state. We, as a city, are the second lowest, and our park district is also the second lowest. And the only reason they are the second lowest is because the city of Williston, when they passed the sales tax to support their community center, they suspended their property taxes for the term of that sales tax duration, which I believe to be 10 years. So they don't levy any mills for their park board. They are completely sales taxes afforded. So I just wanted to commend the city commission for lowering the mills, being very diligent about staying on top of property taxes themselves. And we all know that mills has a very close relationship with valuation. So I'd like to talk a little bit about valuation as well. And if you compare, and I'm going to use 2012 to 2013 numbers, because that's the next available year that Mr. Fuchs has put together, our valuation has increased the second-most in the state during that timeframe. But our mills decreased the most out of all comparable cities. They went down by 89 mills. Minot was second, Devil's Lake third, and Williston fourth. So when you compare taxes on an equivalent $100,000 worth of property value, our property taxes went down 27%, which is the highest amount of any comparable city in the state, followed by Williston and Minot. So I think that's important for our residents to understand, that we really, as a commission, you've done a very nice job of keeping property taxes low and actually really low comparative to year-over-year averages. If you look at that $100,000 property tax, if that equates equally amongst all cities, it means we have the second-lowest rate of taxation in the state. I just, I wanted to point that out, because I think it's really important. The next thing that I wanted to talk just briefly about is a...
Mr. Kessel?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I see you also have some figures in there comparing special assessments around the state. You know, the public might be interested in a brief summary about that, too, I'm thinking. Did you have a chance to look at that?
I didn't include that in the documents I brought forth. So I gave that to you, but I didn't include it in my packet. So, Mr. Jackson, you may be...
Oh, you would do that. Well, I would only say, and maybe in a future meeting, maybe you could comment on this a little bit more, but Dickinson has almost no special assessments. For all practical purposes, we have no special assessments, and there are other communities in the state that have tens of millions and even hundreds of millions in special assessments. I don't know if that will always be the case, but it's been the case for a long time in Dickinson, and it certainly is today. So when you couple that with the comments you've just made about property taxes, I think it says a lot for what past city commissions have done in this community.
Commissioner Jackson, I found that information, so I'll be happy to share it today. And you've already provided a nice summary. But the city of Dickinson, based on the debt incurred in 2013, carries $3 million in special assessment debt. When you look at comparable cities, we'll use Fargo just as the largest, they have just under $300 million in special assessment debt. And West Fargo, a city that's very close in size to us, carries $150 million in debt. So it is, and then, you know, you do have some smaller, in fact, the closest amount to us is Jamestown. They carry $11.3 million in debt. So out of the most populous cities in North Dakota, we carry almost a quarter of the debt that the most, that the lowest city closest to us carries. And as Commissioner Jackson has pointed out, a lot of times, special assessment debt is considered another tax. That's how it's viewed by those people who pay it anyways, is another tax similar to a property tax. So in all cases, I must agree that the city commission has really held the line when it comes to the total tax burden placed upon its citizens.
You know, it's a longer conversation than we can have tonight. We've talked a lot about how we can get lot prices down, should be less money in this community of ours. Yet, I talked to a young couple in Fargo a couple of weeks ago who live in a relatively new home that has $25,000 with the specials on it. They're looking at possibly purchasing a lot so they can build a newer home. And when they looked at that lot, it had $75,000 worth of specials on it. You know, we have lot prices that are getting high, but the infrastructure that causes those specials is included in the lot prices, if I'm making sense. I'm not saying that that helps decrease the cost of lots necessarily, but it is a perspective that we all should have as to where we are in this community.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Are there any other questions that I can answer? Not, then I'd like to report just briefly upon the presentation that I was privy to listen to. Senator Rich Wardner, Senate Majority Leader, Rich Wardner, presented to the oil and gas-producing counties board, executive board, and it was in relation to the formula changes and upcoming surge legislation that he is advocating for and trying to pass in this next session. The first piece of that would be the surge funding. These would be one-time dollars that would be distributed as early in the session as possible, assuming that they do get passed. And currently, the city of Dickinson is slated for $50 million in surge funds. As of today, those are viewed as a block grant, that we can then apply those to infrastructure projects or other oil-related impacts. The oil hub cities are not the only communities that would participate in the surge funding. Each county is slated for a certain surge amount that would then be, and the cities as well within those counties. So the top 10 producing oil counties, which does, of course, include Stark, the county would be in line for about $15 million of surge funding, with an additional $10 million being distributed to the cities within Stark County minus the city of Dickinson. So in other words, Bellfield would be slated to receive just under $4 million, Gladstone just over $1 million, Richerton about $2.6 million, Southart one point, just under $1.5 million, and Taylor about $730,000. So all cities and counties in oil country would benefit from the surge dollars, and that also includes school districts. There's currently $3.5 million in school district funding in the surge bill as well. There's also a formula change that is being recommended. That formula change would take the 75-25 mixture, which currently has 75% going to the state and 25 going back to local political entities, would be switched to 60-40. That means 60 to local entities and 40% in the state. The budget was reviewed, and that is fiscally able to be done, if that, you know, state obligations could be met with that change in financing. And I want to point out that even though 60-40 is the term that you oftentimes hear, the actual amount that comes back to local political subdivisions is not 60% of the oil and gas revenue. It actually equates to somewhere around 20%, between 20 and 24%. And that's an important distinction to make, because this, we're only talking about the gross production tax, the portion of the formula. So it's only 1% of the 5% that's currently allocated. So if that formula change is made, that means that the city of Dickinson would participate and receive about $52.7 million. So if you look at the way the funding formula works, and it's a very complicated formula, one bucket fills, it dumps into another bucket, and then another bucket, and then another bucket. The, once the bucket that we participate in in that funding formula has a 9% distribution to hubs, oil hub cities, that means a total distribution anticipated, of course, and that's based upon oil production and price, and there's been a lot of variability in price in the last few weeks. So there'd be an estimated total of $175.5 million distributed to the three oil hub cities of Williston, Dickinson, and Minot. And Dickinson's slated share of that currently is $52.7 million. There's also a proposed change in the percentage of employment. We do get reimbursed $375,000 per percentage point of employment in the oil industry. They did redefine what oil employment is. They made that broader so that it does cover more job categories. So the pool is now bigger than it was in the past. And the number per employment is also going up from 375 to 500, again, if this legislation passes. If it does pass, that means that the city of Dickinson would be slated or expected to receive about $19.5 million a year, or $39 million in a biennium. Large city schools also participate in that funding formula, and so the Dickinson public schools would be slated for about $11.7 million in that funding formula. Now, one of the sacrifices that we make for having a funding formula change from 75-25 to 60-40 would be that we no longer participate in the energy impact grants. These grants have been, we've received several million dollars in energy impact grants in the past, but we would no longer be eligible for those grants. They are proposing $140 million in, for the biennium, in energy impact grants. And even though the city would not be eligible, the airports would be. And they're currently slated about 90 million of the 140 is for airports specifically. So the city of Dickinson's airport would be eligible under that category. There's also categories for law enforcement, sheriff's departments, EMS, fire departments, district health units, domestic violence grants, nursing home grants, and critical access hospital grants. All of those areas total, again, $140 million. So this would be a boon for the city of Dickinson, certainly a huge step in the right direction when it comes to funding our capital improvements plan. At last time I checked, our plan, our five-year plan, it was exceeded $1 billion. Now, that, of course, included what I call partner projects, things that the DOT, we'd like to see funding, which would be completely separate from the formula funds. They'd be separate and distinct from formula dollars. With the, with the funding formula, if it goes unchanged and the production and price match what these budgeted numbers are on, it goes a long way to funding our needs. We would still require... We would still require a surge payment next biennium. So it doesn't go all the way to funding our needs. There still would be a gap. So we'd still have to be diligent about projects, how we bid them, prices, but I wanted to at least provide you with a synopsis of what the expected revenues would be, considering those legislative changes. And we did budget those. These numbers are in our budget for 2015. Any questions about that report? If not, I just have a couple of quick ones. Also related to budgets, I wanted to mention that the Water Coalition has put together their recommendations of a budget to the state water commission, and inside that document, it contains a recommendation for the Southwest Water Board for, or Pipeline Project, for $79 million for this biennium, $100 million in the 2015 to '17 biennium, $30 million in the '17 to '19 biennium, and $10 million in the '19 to '21 biennium. I did have a conversation with the executive director, Ms. Mary Massid, and she confirmed that these are the numbers that they were advocating for. And again, this is simply a recommendation made by the Water Coalition, it is not the adopted Water Commission budget. But that was a good sign that they have more advocacy than just themselves. So we'll be advocating on their behalf as well. Just two more quick reports. The first is, I attended the downtown conference in Bismarck held last week, on Wednesday and Thursday. Doug Burgum, the founder and chairman of the Kilborn Group, was present and provided the keynote speaker. He did a very nice job of summarizing the values of downtown and some of the projects that have happened in their downtown. The amount of employment that they create, the property tax increase, or property tax evaluation that's increased, makes creating a downtown a value-added proposal, not simply from a community services perspective, but also from a financial perspective. And then we heard Tom Guzman, who is the director in Iowa for their downtown areas, talking about the Main Street program and the benefits that it has provided. And then we heard a couple other presentations, but very good. We met with our downtown committee today and discussed the next steps in that process, which we'll share with the commission probably at the next city commission meeting. Then I just briefly wanted to mention the Crooked Crane Trail. It is a partnership project with the North Dakota, or with the city park and rec, and the Friends of the Crooked Crane Trail. We are trying to obtain a Outdoor Heritage Fund grant to create a 1.8-mile fitness trail along the north shore of Patterson Lake. Would also include around five miles of a shared use path, also on the north side of Patterson Lake, and then 12 more miles of a nature trail on the south side of Patterson Lake, along with birding towers and a couple, some other amenities. We anticipate this to be about a $4 million project that had completed over a couple different phases. We expect to put in the first grant in November, and KLJ is assisting us with that grant proposal. So that concludes my reports, unless there's questions about any of the reports I presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions or comments for the city administrator? Not, then we're going to go to the timetable agenda. We have two items on the timetable agenda. The first is at 5:00. That has to do with the homeless shelter. It's a public hearing, and says on my...
Mr. President, I'll be doing that.
You'll be doing that. That's what I was wondering, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, commissioners, we have in front of us today a temporary use permit for a temporary homeless shelter, consistent with the Dickinson Municipal Code, by Dickinson Churches United for the homeless. If you recall, this is the same organization that has submitted similar applications over the last two years. This effort to provide shelter for the homeless during the winter months has been very successful and helped out the homeless community within our jurisdiction. I will mention the seven churches that will be participating within it, included within your application materials, is their standard operating procedures, and then also the information that pertains to the churches as well. The seven churches are Breakforth Bible Church, Calvary Chapel, Evangelical Bible Church, Living Word Fellowship, St. John's Lutheran Church, Our Savior's Lutheran Church, and United Methodist. Each of these churches will house the homeless for a week period. The homeless will meet at a central location, next to the library downtown, will be bused to the church, will stay overnight, and then be brought back in the morning. City staff has reviewed the application materials and considers it consistent with the code and recommends approval. We have attached seven or nine conditions of approval. Those nine conditions of approval are similar to what they were last year, and I'll highlight a couple of them for you. The homeless shelter would be active from November 1st, 2014, until March 31st, 2015. Prior to opening any of the facilities, the city building department and fire department would need to inspect the facilities and make sure that it meets city code. There's a provision in there, in case they are noncompliant, either to start or throughout the duration, penalty provision for that. There would be a maximum of 15 males that'll be at the facility at one time, first come, first served, no more than 15, with at least three volunteers that are at each site, and then each of the facilities will provide proof of insurance as part of their application materials. I do have, in the audience, we have Bill Kelly, who is the executive director. I don't know if he wants to state anything for that, but he'll be here for any questions you do have. So with that, staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kertan. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to comment regarding this issue may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment? There's no one that wishes to comment. We'll declare the public hearing closed. There is a resolution in your packet regarding this matter. I assume it's Resolution 62-2014. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Not? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Make the motion to approve?
No, second? We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go back to the non timetable agenda, and we kind of hurried things there with Mr. Kessel. Before we move on, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel? Okay, not, we'll go to public safety, and the police department has an item. Chief Dossinger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. The Dickens Police Department recommends the approval of a memorandum of understanding with Dr. David Saxon. Dr. Saxon was served as a team medic for the Southwest Tactical Team. Dr. Saxon employed with Sanford Occupational Medicine. He has over 27 years of experience as an emergency room doctor. Dr. Saxon has over 12 years of experience serving with tactical teams in the Tennessee area. He has attended several tactical team schools, including basic and advanced SWAT. Dr. Saxon would add to the team's capabilities, the team medic role, which allows immediate medical care for the team members and civilians in hostile environments. This is especially important in rural operations. Attached is the memorandum of understanding, if you have any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any comments or questions for the chief regarding this proposed memorandum of understanding? All right, if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion regarding this item?
Make the motion to approve?
There's a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Anything else, chief?
I have the next item to Mr. Mayor.
You do? Okay.
The Dickens Police Department has been awarded a North Dakota Department of Transportation grant contract to provide overtime hours targeting occupant protection violation, impaired driving violations, enforcing underage drinking laws, and deterring distracted driving. The amount of the grant is $17,900. There is no match or cost to the city of Dickens for this grant. The Dickens Police Department is requesting approval of this contract.
Mr. Cooley? Do we have to approve the contract to receive the grant?
We have to prove the contract so that you can sign the contract, and the city can receive the funds.
Okay.
So, yes.
Anybody object to approving the contract? Will there be a motion then to do that?
I'll move we approve it.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just the one grant?
Just one grant.
Oh, okay. Just checking. We'll go down to engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have some project updates?
Yes, Mr. President, commission, we do have a few project updates. Just briefly wanted to update the commission on a few road closures that we have ongoing in the city right now. Again, the 15th Street road closure north of Interstate, that's going to be, remained closed for the next several weeks. We are in the process of creating that four-way intersection at State Avenue and 21st Street, like we had talked before. Our plan is to put a stop-ahead sign to alert motorists of this new four-way stop at the top of the hill for the northbound traffic, and put, similar to, we have a few others in town, but with the solar-powered flashing light to grab the motorist's attention there. Our 40th Street project that we've been working on most of this year has been bid, it's awarded, they're beginning construction this week. We'll have a detour set up for that project as well. 40th Street will be closed in phases. It'll mostly affect the local businesses along 40th. They've been notified by the contractor of this road closure. But again, that project will be ongoing through the rest, the remainder of the construction season. We have some closures on Broadway, close to Highway 22. Again, we're trying to wrap those areas up. That'll be a continuation project that'll be completed in 2015. And most of those closures, I guess we can anticipate those to remain through the construction season. And we just, this week, have a new road closure on 10th Avenue East, in the 300 block of 10th Avenue East, and I believe that closure is anticipated to just last a week, although it may spill over into next week, depending on how fast they can get the trenches paved. So we're just kind of holding our breath and crossing our fingers that the good weather continues. We have a lot of construction going on in town right now, and our contractors are getting some real progress made in October, which is optimistic. Couple other quick updates on some ongoing work in the engineering department. Our floodplain administrator, Ms. Loretta Marshick, has been working with the state water commission, FEMA, and Apex to develop a city FEMA floodplain permit. In the past, we've approved FEMA floodplain applications from developments. This would be a formal city-issued floodplain permit. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll have something forward that we can bring forward to the commission for a city-issued floodplain permit. And we've also been working with Ms. Nomenek on a few positions in the engineering department. First and foremost is a GIS position. We hope to have that job description approved here in the upcoming civil service meeting, and anticipate putting that out and advertising for that position, hopefully filling it this year still. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
You ran through those pretty quick. Did you say a four-way stop at 21st and State, that word?
Correct, yep. And it's an interim measure, just understanding that there's more traffic now, and especially with that closure on 15th.
Right.
So we're studying it for signals to happen in the future, probably next year, but for right now, we'll make it a four-way stop.
Okay, any questions for the city engineer? Comments?
Is your patching on streets and all the various underground projects imminent, as far as you know?
It is. We're working on several projects right now. On Broadway is probably the most extensive, quite a bit of patching right there. 5th Street on the south side of town, that streetwork is ongoing right now. They're doing some curb and gutter work, paving to follow. And then the project on 15th Street, where the closure is right now, 15th and 14th, working with the contractor to get that project buttoned up for winter.
Anything else for the city engineer? Okay, well, then I think we can get one more thing in here, Public Works. Mr. Zurov, you've got a change order on the West Pump Station in Force Main?
President Johnson, commission, enclosed, we do have the change order for the West Pump Station in Force Main. This is actually a decrease in the change order, and because, I guess, it was difficult and a lot of discussion, Mr. Berg is here to go through it and discuss the whole process of how we went through the change order.
President Johnson, members of the city commission. This change order arose from a claim of differing subsurface conditions during construction. Apex Engineering disagreed with this claim. This led to a number of meetings with the contractor, city staff, and Apex Engineering, and resulted in this negotiated change order to eliminate about two and a half blocks of gravity sewer, and to proceed with the remainder of the project. It's a net deduct to the project of $171,375, and we're recommending approval.
Will we have to do something in its place next year?
The, no. But what this change order does, it means that one of the lift stations that could have been decommissioned down the road will remain.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Berg?
Maybe not directly related to the change order, but the project as a whole is, looks like it's going to be finished on time?
Yes, yep, and I'll talk a little more on that on our project update.
Any, anything else here? Is there a motion regarding this change order?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Berg, we have a 5:20 timetable. Can you do your updates in three minutes, or would you prefer to wait till after the timetable?
Excuse me, President Johnson, we also have the approval of the bid.
We could do that. That's the, for the reuse pump station?
Right.
Which was added. Okay, why don't, we have time to do that, so...
At the water reclamation facility, the existing pump systems at the reclamation facility can supply the Dakota Prairie Refinery with reused water, up to 250 gallons per minute, which is about 360,000 gallons per day. This reuse pump station will provide a capacity of 2,100 gallons per minute down that pipeline to the west part of town by the refinery. So it would give us the ability to pump 3 million gallons per day to that point. This project bid on September 18th, the lowest combination of bids was $968,632, which is about 20% over the engineer's estimate. At this point, the city's options would be to award the project, or rebid the project at a later date, or a third option would be for the city to procure the pump station and rebid the project where a contractor just does the foundation and the piping. The rebidding the project, there's no way to know if we would get better or worse bids. So at this time, we're recommending... So, at this time, we're recommending award of the project. If the city decides to proceed with this, this would be, from a funding standpoint, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund would cover this under the contingency amount for the water reclamation facility. So, on that $30 million facility, we had 5% contingencies, which is 1.5 million. Under 100,000 has been used so far for change orders. There will be a change order for about $200,000 for some reuse piping to get piped from the plant out to the reuse pipeline the DPR put in. And then, if the city proceeds with this pump station, it would be, from a funding standpoint, would fall under that part of the law.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berg. You've heard his report and his recommendation. Any questions, comments? Well, it appears to me the best thing to do is to accept your recommendation and go ahead and, you know, approve this or accept this bid and authorize construction.
President Johnson.
Yes?
One thing we wanted to bring in tonight, too, is there's not a lot of pipeline in underground, and they are out there now and they could get it done, you know, before winter sets in.
Yeah. What do the rest of you think?
I agree. It looks like you only had one bid, really. And I can't imagine that bidding this again is going to help us at all. We've had engineers' estimates that have been low and some that have been high. And in this construction climate, it's just the way things are going to be sometimes.
Any other comments? All right, would there be a motion regarding this item?
I'll move we approve the bid.
Second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, we'll go to our timetable and then come back to you for project updates. So, we have a 5:20 timetable item. This has to do with on-off sale liquor license. Mr. Kessel, anything you want to add in the way of introduction?
The Coburns has received several extensions onto their license. They're asking for another. I believe we began, they were awarded this license in August of 2012. They are now, as I'm sure you'll hear from their representatives, they have a building secured and will be, plan to open that in the very near future. So, they are here to ask for another extension. With that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Linda Ellis, representing Coburns.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. My name is Lisa Ellis. I'm the Director of Real Estate for Coburns. With me today are colleagues Mike Kozlowski, who's our Liquor Division Manager, Dave Meyer, who's our Vice President of Operations, and Chaz Rising, who's our Architect of Design Builders Rice Building Systems. As Mr. Kessel just told you, and as I'm sure you're aware, we did receive a liquor license in August of 2012. We were still looking for a location at that time, but we knew we wanted to be in Dickinson. We knew we wanted to have a liquor license. That's why we secured it at that time. We've spent the last couple years looking at various locations, trying to find the best location for us. We have found that location in the Prairie Hills Mall, in the Kmart space. We signed a lease and filed a memorandum of lease September 15th of this year. Under the terms of our lease, we are not allowed into that space to begin the remodel until the middle of December. What we would like to do is open the grocery store with the liquor store as one piece so that we can really put our best foot forward in Dickinson and give the citizens of Dickinson a cash-wise experience that we are providing in other parts of North Dakota. That's why we're here. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ellis. Mr. Coling, we have a resolution in our packet, and if that resolution was approved, that would be granting an extension. Can you just briefly describe what's in that resolution to us?
Yes, Mr. President. The resolution before you outlined some of the process that Mr. Kessel went through. Initially, this license was granted in August of 2012. It relates some of the extensions that have been given. The extensions are authorized by either Mr. Kessel or our city code allows you, as the Board of Commissioners, to grant additional extensions as you deem appropriate. This extension would require the Coburns would operate and open a business under this on-off sale license by May 31st of next year. And if the business was not opened and operated under that license by May 31st, the license would revert back to the city. And you could then sell that license or auction it off as you would deem best. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. So, does the Commission have any questions for either Mr. Coling or the Coburns representatives? How long do you expect the remodel project would take?
Well, it'll probably take us till right around the first of May. We are contractually obligated to open a store at the location by the end of May. So, our little bit of a hiccup is that we have to wait until Kmart has completed their agreement with the landlord. That's a little bit of our issue. But what we'd like to do, if we, if everything works the way we're hoping, we'd get in, do the liquor store first, and then work on the grocery store.
So, you may have any other comments or questions? Mr. Kessel?
I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that since we, they were awarded the liquor license, we had another one that also was purchased. And there are two entities out there who are still interested in a license. Just waiting.
We've, you know, we issue these based upon our population, and I know, well, I think we are under-issued at this point, are we not?
I would agree with that.
So, I mean, where are we at in terms of what we've issued supports which population number? Do you remember?
Mr. President, I believe that the latest license that we issued recognized a population of 24,000.
And we get one every 3,000?
3,000, every 3,000.
Okay. Well, I, for one, am happy to, you know, see the prospect of the cash-wise store becoming a reality. I know it's been a longer process than what you planned on, but I think that's the way things go in the Bakken sometimes. It's a little different environment here. And I know I could support the approval of this resolution, which would extend the date till May of 2015. Anybody feel differently on this matter?
No. And they've been paying the renewal fee each year, just as any other liquor license holder has. The only thing we've been missing out on is the sales tax revenue from a dormant license. And if we pushed for the last extension to have been the final extension, I think certainly you could put up a makeshift liquor store in the mall to circumvent it, so, which would be pointless. I don't know where six months more is going to make a big difference in where this license stands.
I would also mention that our police department is appreciative of the license being on the shelf because it's less people that they've had incidences to respond to.
Mr. Jackson?
I have had a handful of queries from residents asking why we continue to give these extensions of time. And, you know, I think you said it well. I think we'd have preferred that it didn't happen. I'm sure that Coburns would have preferred it didn't happen. But the reason I think we should be doing this is I see the grocery store and liquor store being a package deal. Maybe how much of a package deal it is, we'll never know. But I think there's a lot of desire in the community for another grocery store, and I see them coming together. So, for that reason, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
Mr. President, I agree with the resolution here. I wonder if number four, it doesn't give us any options, or it says if the business is not open and operated by Coburns by May 31, 2015, the license shall revert. Is that a little strong, or should be, should be at our option, call it?
Well, that's a good point, Commissioner Steiner, Mr. Coling. I assume you drafted the resolution?
I did draft the resolution, Mr. President. If you would like to change that shall to may, the option of the Board of City Commissioners, I would have no issue with that.
Any objections to substituting the word may for shall?
No.
Mr. Coling, can we just agree to do that before we act on the resolution, or do we have to amend the resolution as presented to us?
You may pass the resolution with the change noted, and we'll make that on the final copy.
Okay. So, would there be a motion to approve this resolution with the, as he said, the change noted, the shall to may?
I'll make that recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second now. Is there other discussion? Hearing none will go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you for appearing.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Berg, we'll go back to project updates on Public Works projects.
Okay. President Johnson, members of the City Commission. The water reclamation facility was awarded the American Public Works Association Project of the Year for cities in North Dakota over 5,000. The water reclamation facility started meeting its affluent limits about three weeks ago. And today, we started pumping reused water at a low rate out to the refinery. What's remaining at the water reclamation facility is landscaping and seeding, and that will end up getting pushed off until next spring. The other major project is on the west part of town by the west business loop and old Highway 10. That's the west pump station, the west lift station. That project became operational October 4th. We tested the pump systems and the control systems and pumped clean water from that location all the way out to the water reclamation facility. The refinery expects to send wastewater within the next week or two to that facility, but the city is ready for that to happen. There were a number of construction change order claims during the west pump station project with different levels of merit. That claims process was tabled until we get through substantial completion in an effort to proceed with construction. So, as we get into November and December, we'll be dealing with some of those outstanding issues. The west gravity sewer is along the west business loop on the west side of the road. That project is 67% complete in terms of money paid. Another large project is up by Elts, up at Fifteenth Street and Tenth Avenue. And that's the project with the street closure right now. That project, the commission, completion date is next spring. They're making good progress. A big push right now is to get Fourteenth Street paved and to get Fifteenth Street, the pipe put in and get that taken care of, really running against a clock timewise. Looking ahead, once construction wraps up, we'll be looking at the latest population forecast and comparing that to the future expansion phases for the water reclamation facility. And I expect we will be back before the Commission towards the end of the year with some of those findings. Be happy to answer any questions.
When you say you're looking at the latest population forecasts, I assume then you're looking at the capacity of the wastewater treatment facility. You know, I think it's, or it's equipped to handle in the low to mid 30,000, I think, population-wise.
Yes.
And I know in the city's capital improvement projects, we do have a line item to expand that project. And I'm thinking, if I remember right, it's about $20 million. Does that, I mean, if the next round of expansion, is that a good ballpark figure to be thinking about?
Yeah, we put estimates together. It's been probably four months since I looked at those. That sounds in the ballpark.
Yeah, and if we pulled the trigger on that and said, go, what's kind of the length of this project from the time it would really be complete, operational?
We'll be looking at that, too. When we look at the population forecast, we'll start out looking at by what date we need to have the expansion done, and then we'll work back.
Work back.
So, we haven't gone through that process yet, but here in the next, well, between now and end of the year, we'll be working through that.
Good.
Mr. Berg, once it's planned and designed, but construction would be the construction timeline other than the design, because it's already planned to have additional basins, correct?
Yes. Yeah, a lot of the planning is done. There would be a design phase and then a construction phase, and I don't have, I don't have accurate timeframes for those two phases, but we'll be presenting that with the population or with the phasing.
And as I recall, our, you know, our buildings are there. We oversize the buildings to accommodate a population of just over 60,000. So, if we go ahead with this, it's predominantly equipment?
There's some equipment and also some tanks.
Tanks.
But you're correct, the buildings have been sized for the 60,000.
President Johnson, I would like to add to other, along with the award, American Public Works Award last week at the Water Pollution Control Conference, I was lucky enough to be involved in presentation with Carla Olson on the water reclamation facility. Very well attended, lots of questions, and it was a great conference. We also had a distribution panel discussion that Mr. Kubis and I were on, on Dickinson's distribution system, and a lot of interest from the Fargo and the eastern cities, so.
Well, you know, this whole process has really gone, I think, remarkably well. You said earlier that in terms of change orders, it's, you probably are dealing with a couple hundred thousand dollars. And this project was well over $30 million, and it's not an easy project. So, to have a $30 million-plus project and really have change orders of that amount, I think is really quite remarkable, and I think it speaks well of the engineering. It speaks well of the contractor. It speaks well of our, the owner's representative on this. So, I, for one, am very, very pleased with that outcome.
Thank you.
Any other projects that you have for us?
No, that completes the project update.
Well, that's quite a few. And by the way, I think it's, you know, really great that we're seen to be wrapping up these projects related to the refinery on time. Very pleased to hear that, you know, hear those reports. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zurov, anything else before we go to community development?
I don't have anything to add unless you have some questions. I guess one thing I will add is our fuel system is up and running, and we started training on the fuel station today with fire, and I think more police will be tomorrow. But so, we are distributing keys, and the Street Department put together a nice little PowerPoint on the training and operation of the fuel system.
Okay. Well, then, we'll go to community development, and Mr. Cretan, you have several items. We'll let you just lead us through those.
Mr. President, the first item is the West Ridge First Replat, Rezoning Pat- Mr. President, the first item is the Westridge First replat rezoning petition from ag to medium-density and high-density residential and public. The property is south of 15th Street to west extension and north of Westridge Drive. Planning zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. There is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan. This is ordinance 1563. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1563? If no one wishes to comment, any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, I'll move we approve the second reading of 1563.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezoning petition for Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition. This is a rezone petition from low-density residential or from ag to low-density residential, medium-density residential, and planning unit development. The project is west of State Avenue and south of 48th Street Southwest. There is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance 1564, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? If no one from the public that wishes to comment, any comments or questions by commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding second reading and final passage of 1564?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a zoning text amendment. This is to increase the setback distance from 24 feet to 30 feet for perpendicular garages and other structures. There is no change from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Kretan. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding proposed ordinance 1565, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment? If no comments from the public, then any comments or questions by commissioners?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, is a development agreement, and I'll let Attorney Coling present that.
Mr. President, commissioners, this is a development agreement between the city and several landowners located along the East 94 Business Loop. This development agreement would allow Wesley Truck Center to construct what would be known as 29th Avenue East. This is the road that is located just between Tiger Discount and the Dakota Diner, provides access to the Wesley Truck Center to the north of the Interstate 94 Business Loop. Pursuant to this agreement, there would also be some dedications of right-of-way as well as a closure of one access to the Dakota Diner, which would allow that intersection hopefully to be cleaned up a little bit and allow for a little bit better traffic management and traffic flow around that area. The road construction would be done by Wesley or their contractor, and the costs, including the engineering, would also be borne by Wesley in order to provide access to their property. City staff would recommend approval of the agreement. I would be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments, questions?
Mr. President, no comments really, other than to commend our staff for getting this taken care of by Mr. Coling, Mr. Kubis, Kretan, anybody who was involved. This was a messy, messy deal. It's really good to get it cleaned up.
So, are your staff?
I would make a motion to approve the development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second it.
So, staff, you're satisfied with the way this resolution turned out?
Mr. President, I think we are satisfied. There are probably some other traffic improvements that are going to have to be done along the business loop, but this, I think, cleans up one that has been outstanding for a long time and should help us with all the traffic flow out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion to approve the agreement and the second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the final plat from the preceding item discussing the Fisher's Interstate Third Edition. City staff would recommend approval.
Okay, and Mr. Coling, if I've kept my numbers straight, I think this is Resolution 64?
Correct.
Okay. So, any comments or questions here by commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 64?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item E is annexation, and Mr. Coling will introduce this.
Mr. President, commissioners, the city did receive an annexation request from Roar's Development with respect to Westridge Second Edition and some previously unannexed property within Westridge First Edition. There is a copy of the annexation map that has been provided to you at your desks. This would be the whole of Westridge Second Edition or what has been preliminarily platted as Westridge Second. This annexation would also take in the Interstate I-94 right-of-way to the south of Westridge, the Westridge Editions. The legal description for the annexation varies a little bit from what you received in your packets, but I believe there is a copy of revised ordinance that has been also placed at your desks that would incorporate all of this, all of this area within the annexation map. Roar's Development does own all of the property involved in this annexation, so that does allow us to proceed with annexation under an ordinance method rather than a resolution method that we have customarily done. If the commission agrees with this annexation, you may pass the ordinance, and then we would then notify the county and any other affected property owners. And then upon passage of second reading and final passage of the ordinance, the property would be annexed into city limits. Be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling, and this is 1566.
Correct.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'd invite the public to comment regarding ordinance 1566. If anyone from the public would like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1566?
Yeah.
There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by commissioners? Not, would there be a motion regarding the first reading of 1566?
So moved, Mr. President.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. There is a, next item is a development agreement regarding Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition. Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, commissioners, as you stated, this is a proposed development agreement for Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition. You'll note that there was not an attachment included in the commission packet. We had hoped to provide you with a signed and fully negotiated and agreed-to development agreement, and I don't believe that we're there yet with the developer. We did have a meeting among city staff with the developer and some of the developer's representatives back, I believe, the last week of September, and at that time, thought we had reached a full agreement, and since that meeting, we've had some discussions with the representative that seem to indicate we don't have an agreement. So, I don't have a development agreement to present to you for approval tonight. I do know the developer is in the audience and may wish to address you on that matter as well. But in the event there is no development agreement, I think the other two items for Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition are probably premature as well. In the event we don't have a development agreement, I think it would more than likely be unwise to proceed with approval of the final plat as well as the annexation of this area. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any questions for Mr. Coling?
Can you shed some light on what some of the hangups are with the development agreement?
Yes, there's basically two issues that I think remain outstanding. You know, three or four weeks ago, we had quite an extensive list of issues, and I think we've narrowed it down to two of them. One of the things that we discussed in our meeting with the developer was the payment of a one-time development fee that would be made in lieu of special assessments to the property, special assessments specifically for State Avenue since this property adjoins that. And what we had proposed to the developer was a development fee, a one-time fee of $900,000. We thought that was agreed to at the meeting, but since have learned that the developer would like to reduce that by about $50,000 or so. So, I think that's the variance that we have there. The other issue has to do with the city taking over management of the stormwater ponds and the stormwater drainage ditch. This, what we had talked about with the developer was that the city would take over maintenance and ownership of those stormwater facilities 30 months after issuance of the first building permit within the subdivision. That would allow the developer to maintain those ponds, make sure that they are fully constructed and in good working order, more or less through the development of that subdivision or through the initial construction of that subdivision. And then, once the city could inspect that, that work, we could take those over and manage that stormwater drainage system similar to how we do that system through the remainder of the city. The developer, we thought, had agreed to that at our meeting back in September, and has since learned that they would like to reduce that timeframe from 30 months to 24 months. So, that's our variance there. We just haven't, I guess, come to an agreement with the developer on those couple of issues.
So, we're off by $50,000 in six months?
Roughly. And I think, you know, those numbers that we thought were agreed to in September, I think were really compromise positions from city staff. The construction of State Avenue itself is going to be a fairly expensive proposition. I think we have it slated for around $7 million or something like that. So, there's the potential there that special assessments could be levied for that road that would be far in excess of the $900,000 that we were seeking from the developer on this, as well as the stormwater management facilities or drainage facilities. Typically, we have wanted and required developers to maintain those as part of a homeowners' association or some other private entity. And because this stormwater drainage system is really the entrance point of the major stormwater drainage through the city of Dickinson, as a compromise, the city was willing to take those over after, 30 months after the first building permit. And apparently, I don't think we have an agreement with the developer on that either.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Coling or city staff?
Well, I would react to that by saying I think you're correct in your recommendation to delay the rest of the approvals. I don't think we should. And, you know, I've been generally aware of the negotiations as they've been going on the last months, and, boy, I think that the place that you are as staff with the developer are very reasonable, is a very reasonable place. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to hogtie you in your negotiations, but I think where we are is a good place, myself.
I would agree.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman. Anyone else wish to question or comment? Mr. Cook, would you or one of your representatives like to address this?
Good evening, commissioners. Mike O'Carroll. Well, I guess we are kind of surprised at how Mr. Coling said this. Our attorney has been working with him since Thursday of last week, and we have several emails. And first off, how it went down is I think we were negotiating, and we went in with an $800,000 offer and the 24-month on the agreeing to maintain the pond with a release of liability to anything that would happen downstream. The city came back with the 900 and the 30 months, and I guess we were under the assumption this was a negotiable deal. So, when we left, those were the terms that were laid on the table. $800,000 by us, $900,000 by the city, 30 months by the city, 24 months by ours. Scott Porzberg, the attorney, sent off an email, I think it was on Thursday, I have it here, offering 850 and 24 months. Asked for a response from Matt Friday because Scott was in depositions all day today and knew this had to be done. Didn't get any call, any response until 9:45 this morning, an email that comes across and says, "We, Sean and I don't feel we have any room for negotiations." Well, kind of short-term to try and put an agreement together in 10 hours or five hours or six hours, I guess that kind of puts us on a real bad position. I don't think, we're not in agreement. If that's what it's going to take, we'll agree to the 900, we'll agree to the 30 months. We were just under the assumption it was going to be a fair negotiation, but I guess it's not. So, we did not say we were negotiating, and we have the emails right here as to what went on, but we're going to agree to the 900. If we're going to be forced into it, fine, and we'll agree to the 30 months. There's still, I think, some other items that need to be taken care of in that developer's agreement, some minor items, language here and there, but again, our attorney has not been able to correspond with Mr. Coling on the rest of those. So, I guess what we would ask is, the two items he's in objection to, I guess, we'll agree to those. We would like to move on to the next item and the annexation until Matt and Scott can get the final languages signed. We won't sign the plat, but I guess we'd like to go ahead and annex, which I think will help the city and us move all the projects along out there. We were notified today, if we don't do hookups to the city facilities tonight, our project is dead, they won't put the sewer and water in, then there's no sense in us doing anything. We have nothing to sell, we have nothing to put out for the city. So, it's plain and simple.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cook. Anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Cook? Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Johnson, I'd just like to say that I was away on city business, and so Mr. Coling and I did not get an opportunity to discuss the negotiated terms. I also, upon leaving, thought we had a deal at 930 months, so I was surprised to find out that there was actually a further negotiated submittal by Mr. Cook and his team. But I did want to clear that up, that Mr. Coling and I did not have an opportunity to discuss this matter until this morning upon my return.
If the developers accepted the $900,000 in 30 months, are there other issues remaining in the development agreement that maybe not major but haven't been fully agreed to by both parties?
Mr. President, I have talked with Mr. Cook's attorney, I believe we talked twice last week, and I think have the remainder of the issues in the development agreement worked out. It was just these two issues that were remaining for negotiation or discussion, and if the developer is agreeing to those terms, then I guess I would be comfortable moving forward if the commission is comfortable. You know, the agreement is not in your packets, and you haven't seen it, so you're going on staff's recommendations, but I'm okay with moving forward if the commission is.
By that, you mean to approve the development agreement with the $900,000 in 30 months and then go ahead and act on items G and H? and then go ahead and act on items G and H?
Yes, Mr. President. I think items G and H, if you're amenable to it, we would request approval of those items contingent upon a signed development agreement. That would allow us to get that signed development agreement and then wait with the recordation of the final plat and the recordation of the annexation resolution until we have that document in hand.
On the development agreement, does it take it down to the very basics that were, you know, maybe not stressed the first time, streetlights, mailboxes, things that you would think would go into a development that weren't a part of it? Do we have those things nailed down?
Yes, Commissioner Altman, the agreement is fairly detailed. It goes into those issues you mentioned, as well as a number of other issues that have been discussed on this project and we've encountered on other projects from time to time. I don't believe there's anything else that would preclude us as city staff moving forward with the agreement. One thing I guess I should note, there has been discussion with respect to this project, with respect to the stormwater drainage system as it moves downstream, the additional properties to the east of State Avenue that would be included in the annexation. We still do need to meet with the downstream landowners to discuss their damages. We do have estimates from them for what they believe their damages are to their stormwater systems. And I believe there are funds within that development fee payment that will be part of this development agreement that will be made available to those downstream landowners to correct any stormwater damage that they have received or that believe they have received from the Cook Middle Hills, 1 through 4.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask. Couple of meetings ago, we had some, it came up that there were some issues about four that needed to be resolved before we proceeded on this. Have they, have those issues been resolved?
I believe so. I think I'd leave it to Mr. Kuvas to address the engineering issues on the stormwater management system in Cook IV.
Commissioner Decker, on the engineering issues, I believe we do have that taken care of. Whether or not all parties agree that the engineering design passed or the current one is correct, it meets our ordinance. We're still working through FEMA floodplain paperwork with the Region 8 Office of FEMA in Denver, but that process is moving along. Like Mr. Coling said, we do have claims in the form of estimates from contractors to reclaim some of the channel downstream on past incidences that have happened from runoff from the Cooks 1 through 4 subdivision. We've talked to some of those landowners, but I think we need to have a formal meeting, like Mr. Coling said, to essentially take over those negotiations and settle with those landowners. The fees included in this development agreement would cover those costs for the downstream landowners, though. So we feel that the stormwater issues are taken care of. Whether or not, you know, everyone will be satisfied, maybe that's good negotiation is when everyone's not quite satisfied with the outcome. But I think we've got a good agreement in place. Mr. Coling, I think, has covered every issue that's been brought up, the original conditions from last July's planning and zoning meeting. So I think, from the engineering department's perspective, we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuvas.
So I guess I have one additional question. It sounds like from our attorney's standpoint, our engineering standpoint, you feel like we have everything ironed out. I hate to put you guys on the spot, but Mr. Zarath, Mr. Cortan, you guys keep, what's your reaction? Any outstanding issues, anything that we have to be concerned about?
Just minor on the plat. Some plat language needs to be changed. I'll get in contact with the developer. I've been on vacation for the last week and a half, and they need to do that, but there's nothing to preclude you from approving the plat tonight based upon the development agreement?
I haven't had a real chance to look through all the development agreement. I am a little concerned, I guess, on just some of the compaction and street issues we had in the other Cooks addition. And I'm not sure on what's exactly going to happen with the Maryland lift station. I believe that's not going to be continued. I wasn't sure on that part of the development agreement.
Mr. President, I believe under the development agreement, that lift station in Cook IV will be decommissioned and removed.
So there won't be any use from Cook's 5th to the Maryland lift station?
Once State Avenue is completed, that's right, all of the wastewater will go down to the State Avenue.
But there will be interim use?
There will be interim use in the event that portions of Cook's 5th are developed prior to the completion of State Avenue.
And I guess that was one of my concerns, is, you know, we haven't completely accepted that lift station. I assume, you know, I assume they will continue to maintain it while the construction continues and State Avenue will continue.
I believe that's the intent, yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments, questions, discussion?
The only other thing I would add is that planning and zoning has gotten to see the development agreement on at least two meetings, maybe three, I don't remember, as it's evolved. And while planning and zoning doesn't do a formal approval of the development agreement, they're, they have been monitoring it and been involved in that evolution.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, are you comfortable with Mr. Coling's recommendation?
I am.
Okay. Anything else here? Then if I understand this properly, we can act on Item F, which is the development agreement, as long as it contains the $900,000 for the development of State's Avenue and the 30 months regarding the water ponds and drainage ditch.
Correct.
And I'm sure Mr. Coling will help with the crafting of the proper motion, but that's the spirit of the motion. Would someone care to move that?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
The only other thing I would say in general about this subdivision, although we've had our disagreements with Mr. Cook along the way, and maybe that's another statement about those disagreements, this has the potential to be a really, really nice development in Dickinson. It's going to be mostly residential, and the location that it is, the layout, it's really got the potential to be a nice neighborhood for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments? Did we, did I get a motion and a second? Okay. All right, it's been a long time. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So then we'd go to Item G.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Item G is a resolution, and again, if I've got my numbers right, I think it's Resolution Number 65. And Mr. Cortan, you've already made some remarks about this, but we'll let you go ahead and introduce it.
This is the final plat for Cook Middle Hills, 5th addition. Staff recommends approval.
Well, that was pretty brief. And Mr. Coling has recommended that if you pass this resolution, you pass it contingent upon getting a signed development agreement. So that, if you're in favor of this item, that would be the motion then to approve contingent upon a signed development agreement. Would there be such a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion here? We'll go ahead and vote then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Motion, and chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Now, Mr. Coling, on the annexation issue, since that is an ordinance, if we pass first reading of the ordinance and you don't get a signed development agreement, then we can simply defeat the second reading. So do we need the contingency in the motion, I guess?
Mr. President, I apologize, it's listed incorrectly in your agenda. This is a resolution.
Oh.
You did pass a resolution initiating the annexation process for Cook Middle Hills, 5th. That was back in August, at the second meeting in August, Resolution 44-2014. Pursuant to the resolution procedure on annexation, the area is defined that you're going to annex, and then we send out letters notifying property owners within the annexed area that the area has been proposed for annexation. They then have 30 days to file written protests to that annexation. And in the event the owners of more than one-fourth of the area proposed to be annexed file written protests, then it is barred to annexation, and we're not allowed to proceed with that annexation. In this case, since you did pass the initial resolution annexing this property back in August, we have sent out those letters to affected property owners as well as to Stark County, and we did receive letters of protest from two property owners. Their combined property amounts to about 19 acres within this annexation area. That's approximately 7.35% of the total annexation area. This annexation would add about 260 acres to the city limits. So this resolution, as it's identified in your packets, is a resolution finding that the owners of less than one-fourth of the land proposed to be annexed have filed written protests and that accordingly, the property is annexed to city limits. This would be the last action that the Board of City Commissioners would take to annex this property. So I think it would be my recommendation that if you do adopt this resolution, you would also conclude those contingencies, that this resolution would be adopted contingent upon the city's receipt of a signed development agreement.
Okay. Mr. Coling has stated that very well. I think it's Resolution Number 66. If you agree with his recommendation, you can simply move to accept his recommendation, and that'll be the motion then, as he stated it.
We would have a question with that. To do the final city hookups, the sewer and the water, we were told we had to wait for the annexation to happen. And again, we were notified tonight, if annexation doesn't happen, we don't get hooked up to sewer and water, and without sewer and water, we don't have a development. So we're asking if we could just go ahead and have it, the annexation done, which I would think would be advantageous to the city anyways. You want the land to be annexed. We think we have enough in the developer's agreement that that should be a pretty fair statement to let you just go ahead and annex us. Unless we can do the city hookup somehow, but we really got to have those city hookups.
Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, I think, speaking on behalf of city staff, I think we would be in strong opposition annexing property that is not, having some hookups to city water and sewer for property that is not annexed to city limits. I think we're in agreement that we can annex this property, and we should move forward with it, but we really need to have that development agreement in place so that the plat can be filed, so that we have the developer's commitment to all the things in the development agreement before any hookups to city services would be made. I think it would still be my recommendation that you would pass the resolution contingent upon the receipt of a signed development agreement.
From a practical standpoint, can't all this happen pretty much simultaneously?
I would certainly think so. I wouldn't anticipate any great delay at all. As soon as we have the signed development agreement, which Mr. Cook's attorney has, once we have that signed development agreement, then we'll record all the documents with the county, and we should be good to go.
That shouldn't be a problem, should it?
Well, with the response we've had in trying to get it done, I mean, it didn't happen in the last five days, there's still some language that needs to be handled for both your protection and our protection. We agreed to the major items, but there's still some language that should really be done into that thing. I mean, I don't think it's, I think it's going to happen, but I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow. Again, Scott told Matt that he was tied up for the rest of this week in depositions and other things, so I guess, I don't know what to say. If we don't get hooked up, we don't have a development.
You know, I guess I would throw it back to how did we get into this situation? Why are we being such a stickler on the development agreement? And it goes back to mailboxes, streetlights, compaction on streets. You have to take on some of the responsibility of why we are at this point today of being so adamant about a signed development agreement before everything else goes in place.
I don't think we're not taking on the agreement. The mailboxes were never anything that was brought up. When we brought them up, we took care of them, we paid for them, we did it. We have issued a layout for the mailboxes in the new development. Streetlights in the old development were never an issue. The city put them in at that particular point in time. We have agreed to put the streetlights into this development. I think we've agreed, everybody keeps saying Cooks 1, 2, 3, and 4, that I did it. You know, I didn't do it. I hired brains, engineers, to do it. I'm just here trying to protect my name and my reputation for trying to make you guys happy. The engineers did it, I hired them. I don't know what to say. I'm not an engineer. I didn't do it. I think between all the engineers now, they're getting it worked out to the best it can be worked out. We've, boy, I don't know, two years to get this thing done, we've been as abused also. I think we're trying, we've tried everything. We had 26 items when this thing started, where probably most guys get one or two. We've done all of them. We've issued our permits, we've issued the plans, we've gotten approvals, we've done everything that we were asked to by city staff through this whole process. And now we are down to it. This has been shoved down our throat. We actually tried to get the developer's agreement started back in July and didn't get anyplace with it. Again, every time this thing came up, it's one day before you have to do it. I mean, we're just trying to be reasonable also, and now you've got weather coming. And we've got, hopefully, a nice development out there. We have people that want to buy. Today, they were out on the site wanting to know when they can buy this property, and we can't get it into your city. I don't know what to say.
President Johnson? I just, I'm not real familiar with subdivisions and developers that build outside the city limits and then pressure the city to be annexed in the city. This is the first subdivision I'm, I'm familiar with, is a subdivision being built outside the city limits and then, and then being built and then be requested be annexed. I mean, that's just difficult for me.
Thank you, Mr. Zarath. Mr. Cook, I don't believe the commission's going to do anything other than pass this resolution with the contingency on it, which, as Mr. Jackson pointed out, simply means if you get the development agreement signed, the moment that's signed and properly recorded, the annexation is done. So I would suggest that between your law firm and the city, you find a way just to expedite that. I don't think, I don't think the commission is willing to do anything else. Am I misspeaking for the commission? Okay, Mrs., we don't have a motion. So as I said earlier, if you approve passing this resolution with the contingency that Mr. Coling outlined, I think you just simply have to move to accept Mr. Coling's recommendation, and the words that he used, the phrases that he used would be that motion. and the words that he used, the phrases that he used, would be that motion. Would there be such a motion?
Mr. President, I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Harry Nun will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're down to commission reports. Are there anything from commissioners?
Just one brief request. I would like to, if we could, the next couple, three meetings here, I'd like to see what projects we're going to be bidding this winter and next spring for construction in 2015. I know we have our capital improvement project list. It becomes a blur to me after a while, I don't know about the rest of you, but if we could just review the list for next year and have a little bit better grasp of where we are, perhaps when they're going to be bid, that kind of thing, I think it'd be a good update that at least I would like to see. That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, there is a request. Any other comments by commissioner? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your issue. There's no one from the public. The chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries.